All right, everyone.
So we went to that.
The time has come for the Monday, October 21st, 2019, regular city council meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger.
He's coming.
He's coming.
He's coming.
Alderman Seeger.
Mr. Diz.
Alderman Mozio.
Here.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Here.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Today is an invocation. It's going to be led by Pastor Juan C. Romero of Crystal Christian Church. And to please step. And immediately following that, we're going to have our guests of the divine nine lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise for the invocation.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I hope this meeting today could give wisdom, give intelligence. Everything that could be said here is for the community. And we expect that everything here, you're in control of everything. Bless us tonight, and we can have a splendid meeting. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Next item is Mayor's comments. Leaf pickup. Leaf pickup is scheduled to begin next week. The schedule is available online and on sheets on the table outside council chambers. I remind you again to please put out leaves only, not yard waste or branches, pumpkins or trash. I'm going to repeat that. We remind everyone to please make sure they only put out leaves, not yard waste or branches, pumpkins or trash. Leaves should go on the parkway, not in the gutters or the streets. We do appreciate your help. Upcoming events, the Genesee Theater has Travis Treats, October 24th, Queen Machine, October 25th, Ideas of March, October 26th, ZZ Top. Oh, ZZ's in town. ZZ Top on November 2nd. Well, that's going to be a good show. Independent Center. It was the Independent Center and the Neon Gallery are hosting the Art of Mental Wellness on February, October 25th. Enjoy an exhibit, food and drink, and exciting auctions at the gallery. The Waukegan Park District is hosting free family fun with Halloween Trick or Treat Trail at Bowen Park, October 26th, and haunted Waukegan walking tours. Oh, wow, that's interesting. October 26th and 31st, starting in Upton Park. That trick or treat is going to be a big one. I think we close off, we close off the streets and everything, right, chief? For the Halloween? Yeah. Waukegan Trick or Treat, the Waukegans Trick or Treat is on Sunday, October 27th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. Turn on your porch lights or otherwise indicate you are giving out treats and drive very carefully when, when you're in the neighborhoods. Relax after trick or treating with free jazz wave concert at Three Brothers Theater, Stage 115, at 6:00 p.m. Waukegan Main Street hosts a booze and, a booze and bruise pub crawl for the, oh my goodness.
Bruze and booze.
Oh goodness. That'd have got you in trouble a little, a little while ago, but anyway. The 20, the 21 set on October 31st. Meet at Night Shades and Dark. Podium brewing at 5:00 p.m. Costumes are highly encouraged as events includes a costume contest. No Joker costume, no. Family Friends Day at Dead Celebration will take place on November 2nd at Jack Benny Center for the Arts from noon until 5:00 p.m. Lake Hurst Events from 5:00 p.m. until midnight, and November 3rd at Belvedere Mall from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We've got a few presentation. I want to take a brief moment to acknowledge our most recent reappointment to the Fire Pension Board at last council meeting, Larry Stanley. Larry, are you here? Stand up. How you doing? Hi, Larry.
Hey.
Thank you. I know it takes a lot of courage to do, to be on some of our boards, and you have a very important job, which are pension for the firefighters and for those who not only have already served, but who are serving. So thank you very much for, for your help. Thank you, sir. All right. I'm going to ask or invite up representatives from what we call the Divine Nine, who are going to quickly talk about their upcoming winter clothing drives. We're actually not going to talk about it. What we're doing tonight, we have a sign every year while I was Alderman and now as mayor, we have done something that's called Hat, Scarf and Glove Drive. And why do we do that? In the past, everyone really does a great job of collecting winter coats for our young men and young ladies, particularly those in those elementary and middle schools. But in that elementary school, our little, little boys and little girls, they were, they're going to lose their hat, their glove and their scarf. It's just, parents hear it all the time. What we're doing with the Divine Nine, we are trying to work, we're not trying, we're working with schools of the nine historically black sororities and fraternities will adopt a school where they will take hats, gloves and scarves and donate that to the principals and the teachers. So then the teachers will have an opportunity to be able to give a hat, scarf and glove to that student who needs it, as all students do. If you give it to them, they will take it. But who knows best? Who needs these, these type of items than those teachers? So with that, with that being said, I'm going to ask the Divine Nine to come up, that's what we call the nine sororities and fraternities, to come up and they're going to take a picture and say, we're going to kick this off today and we'll give you details of what schools are going to, they're going to be participating in, and the timeframe. All right? So come on up, let's take this photo along with the kickoff.
All of us. Yeah, all of us, along with the city. This is, it starts with the city.
And what I should have mentioned, it is a partnership with the city of Waukegan. Sorry, David, I missed that one. Thank you.
Sylvia? Move that baby out if you need to. Move that out. Come on in.
Jane needs the white angel for this one.
And let's get the sign.
Hold on, Jane, they're going to get the sign.
Let's get the sign.
Right in, in there to get it.
They did my thing.
A little sign.
I got into a physical altercation.
Not you.
Yes, I did.
Not you, Doc.
You know the mayor didn't make that sign.
All right, they're looking right here first. Everybody's looking right here. You have to be here one more time.
All right.
Suzie Alexander.
Oh, you're a soror.
But it's champagne, champagne, the Omegas were there.
And there will be a box at, at the clerk's office in City Hall if anyone wants to donate to that.
Omega Phi size.
All right.
What's the age range on those children, same?
And last but not least, we have our Waukegan Proud Award. I want to ask Jane to, to present the latest Waukegan Proud Award to Horse Feathers in celebration of 35 years in business in the city of Waukegan. She's going, you're going to say a little something?
I am going to say a little something. So Horse Feathers has been in business on Genesee Street for 35 years. They started out as vintage clothing, and I told Jim this story. My friends and I used to go in there and for like an hour and a half, try on different clothes. And one of my friends just gave up her, one of the coats she bought almost 35 years ago. So, there you go. They morphed into something different because the owner went to a Grateful Dead concert and realized, life is more colorful than she realized. So she wanted to hit that crowd and she did it in fine fashion. This is her daughter Jennifer. This is Jim Damiano, and we're so proud to give them the Waukegan Proud Award. So mayor, if you could come down, take a picture.
All right. We have the Waukegan Proud. Waukegan City of Progress does hereby present Horse Feathers, this Waukegan Proud Award in recognition of your 35th anniversary of successful business in Waukegan and for serving as one of the most popular destination retailers located in our downtown, presented on October 21st, 2019.
Please present this as an act with the mayor's office, all the office, the citizens of this great city. We say thank you for the service you've provided to the citizens of our, of our city. And I think from my mistake, throughout Lake County. All right, here you go. Congratulations. I know your mom would be very proud of you. Why don't you come in the middle, you on the other side. There you go. In the right.
They're in the right spot, Alderman, Mozio and Seeger. Right here, proud, this is our time.
Congratulations.
Now, as they're leaving, for all those Durkin, all those Durkin and Durkin clothes in their store, they have a Durkin and Durkin table, right? Where all the clothes used to be displayed on. It has Durkin and Durkin right on the side. Awesome.
Hold it in history.
That's right. Hold it down, man. Thank you very much. All right, take care. Congratulations. It's resolutions, proclamation, presentation, deployment, partnership update, Lake County Audubon Society. Is that the? Wow.
My name is Emma England. I am president of Lake County Audubon Society. This is my fellow board member, Diane Rosenberg, leader of the Public Outreach Sharing Ashore Program. The Sharing Ashore Waukegan Partnership launched in May, and the program has been a very big success, surpassing all of its goals. The program attracted more volunteers, more public interaction and far more publicity than we expected. The partnership has also received national recognition. This amazing success is a testament to the vision and leadership of Mayor Cunningham and the city council members. Data collected reinforced Waukegan's reputation as a birding hotspot and confirmed that there is great interest in the unique Waukegan dune habitat. We're asking the city council to renew and expand our Sharing Ashore Partnership in 2020. Upon your approval, Lake County Audubon Society will develop a community-wide initiative that will connect our partnership to Waukegan residents. This is an invitation to anyone that is interested to meet with us and plan sharing ashore programs for your organization. Further details can be found on our one pager. Diane's going to hand out some out to the city council. We also have some outside the council chambers. We have planned a meeting to discuss these programs, which will be held on Monday, November the 11th, at 6:30 p.m. at the Waukegan Public Library. And finally, Lake County Audubon Society would like to say a big thank you to Mayor Cunningham and the city council for making this program the success that it was. And we would like to thank you by presenting you a celebratory sign featuring photos from the program and your beautiful beach habitat.
So we're going to come on over here. Awesome. There it is. All right, here we go. Alderman, we're on the road.
All right, everybody's looking here. One more time.
Thank you very much.
Squacks, dummies over.
This is nice. Thank you very much. Cool. Why cut him? He's going to be part of history. 26, 2019. There's a motion by, motion by Alderman Seeger, seconded by Alderman Turner, to approve the proclamation. Any questions? All those in favor? All right. Motion's passed and carry. We'll be presenting this at a, at a later date. Item three will be audience time.
Okay, we have three-minute increment. I'm going to call the first five names. Go ahead and go to the east side and just line up. I have Jeff Crawford, Donna Moore, Ray Vukovic, Diana Burdette, Dylan Burdette. So got it? Jeff Crawford, Donna Moore, Ray Vukovic, Diana Burdette, Dylan Burdette. State your name and I'll start you three minutes.
My name is Jeff Crawford. Is that on?
Did it get turned on?
No. There's a switch on there?
It's doing. It sounded like it was working.
Yeah, it was on.
More mic problems.
Call maintenance.
He's on.
There's Mike.
There we go.
Jim Crawford.
Jeff Crawford. All right, I can start. All right. I can't tell you how many times that has happened to me. I just kill these technology things. And so, my name is Jeff Crawford. I'm the Attorney General of the Forest County Potawatomi. So like you, I am a public servant. I am here today to ask the city to reconsider their motion from last week to not certify the Potawatomi Casino application. The Potawatomi are a community. We are not a corporation. We do not run our gaming operations for our shareholders. We do not run our gaming operations for private interests or individuals. We run our casinos to provide for our people so that they get their education and health care. We also operate our casinos and take our, it very seriously that where we operate our casino, we do it in a responsible manner with the communities that we are associated with. We have a 30-year track record in Milwaukee of redeveloping brownfield areas and communities in distress. But it doesn't stop there. We also have our significant developments in the environmental protection area. We are stewards of the environment. It is a cornerstone of the tribe. And so, we have shown that through our partnerships and our actions. For all these reasons, your consultant recommended and said that we were a qualified applicant. And yet, we were rejected last week with no explanation. We were the only 100% minority-owned applicant, and yet, we were rejected with no explanation last week. Our many attempts to correct the faults and misleading information in your consultant's report were simply ignored. This is not fair. Our attempts to explain our downtown development proposals were not considered by your consultant and therefore not presented to the council. We are here to say that you had that opportunity to make that a right. The Potawatomi are part of the Waukegan history. I look at your sign right there that says, this is the city of progress, and I see your trading post. Potawatomi are part of that history. Waukegan means trading post. Last week, we said we wanted to come back to Waukegan, and we were told we are not welcome with no explanation. We are here to say that we have a, one of the strongest proposals that was presented. You have a review process that weeded out one of the strongest applications that you had. There was incorrect, incorrect information in there, and the information that was shared with the city was just plain wrong. And so, we are asking that we be given an opportunity to have that reconsidered.
Thank you, sir. Donna Moore.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Donna Moore, and I'm a partner with the law firm of Fox Rothschild. I served as the first general counsel for the Illinois Gaming Board. I've been working with the Potawatomi Tribe, both in the certification process and in the IGB, Illinois Gaming Board process. The Riverboat Gambling Act, which was recently amended by Senate Bill 690, mandates that applicants and the corporate authority, the city, negotiate in good faith. The RFP rules prevented the ability to conduct good faith negotiations. And if you look at the rules, it prohibited applicants from having any contact with city council members and staff, blocking the opportunity to negotiate in good faith. And that's not what the Riverboat Gambling Act said. It said you can have conversations about it. Obviously, how would you reach a certification of negotiation if you couldn't do that? And that the only thing is that you report those conversations in a log to the Illinois Gaming Board. And the, this RFP worked against the best proposals being properly considered in Consultant Johnson's report. And he said, last meeting, that he could not by law consider supplemental information. I was at that meeting. I was unclear exactly what law Mr. Johnson referred to, because the RFP never referenced any sealed bids. It didn't say that the city could not negotiate or somehow limit corrections to information that was in his report. That was the process contemplated by the statute. That was the reason why the statute created a log of conversations to be presented to the Illinois Gaming Board. But most importantly, Mr. Johnson did not explain to this council that the Potawatomi never proposed a purchase price of only 5.6 million. In fact, the Potawatomi representatives have been trying to correct that in his report for weeks. In fact, we proposed a $12 million in cash offer, and we have the largest casino with one of the largest streams of income that would come to the city of Waukegan. And based on your comments at the last meeting, that was something of critical importance to the members of this council, and yet, you were given incorrect and inaccurate information by your consultant, Mr. Johnson. Also, by prohibiting public comment at the last meeting, we, the representatives of the Potawatomi, were not permitted or granted the opportunity to come before you to correct the misinformation. And that would have been a violation, that was a violation, of the Open Meetings Act. And as I said, we weren't given the opportunity to address you at that meeting to correct the violation.
Thank you very much. Ray Vukovic.
Good evening. Ray Vukovic, 1703 Hyde Park. I stand here before you tonight as a representative of the Potawatomi, as a former city administrator, as a former Alderman of the fourth ward. But most importantly, I'm a resident of Waukegan. And I know that good developments just don't pop in left and right. You go back in history, I think it's about 10 years ago that the classic Toyota building was built. Before that, any large development that, on this side of Green Bay Road, that everybody was concerned about the Waukegan School District. But the four finalists here all saw Fountain Square as the place to build. And some of them gave crumbs back and forth, but you know, the development in Waukegan School District, in old Waukegan, has been pretty nonexistent. You go back 20 years ago, we did the Jewel Osco Target on North Lewis Avenue. We did Builder Square, or what is it now? Home Depot, Walgreens at Belvedere and Lewis. But there really hasn't been a lot here. There's been public stuff, this building, Genesee Theater, thank God for the county, CLC coming along, but none of them pay a dime in property taxes. And the Potawatomi have talked about sites that are downtown in the first ward, in the fourth ward, in the sixth ward, that would put value on. They, they talk about, you give a man a fish, he'll eat for today. They're talking about showing them how to fish, and it will help this community and this school district for years to come. So I ask that you do the right thing tonight and reconsider your vote. Send all four down, let the Illinois Gaming Commission make the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Burdette.
I want to say thank you, first of all, to the community members who did show up to the Clean Air Act permit hearing by the Illinois EPA, as well as those who attended the third Illinois EPA meeting regarding our coal ash ponds listening session and how they want to form legislation moving forward. There will be two more, and we need the voices of the community to come in and tell the Illinois EPA that we need stronger legislation. We do not want a sixth, or seventh, or eighth superfund site in Waukegan. Acres of land that cannot be used right now. We do not need that moving forward. There are two bills up. House Bill 3885, HB 3885, and House Bill 3888, HB 3888, regarding ethylene oxide. Unfortunately, these bills don't look like they're going to make it through how they've been written. So we need to continue to stay on top of this as a community, because if we don't have a healthy foundation for our children, for our future, we will not be able to move forward. Cognitive development is an issue. Muscular development is an issue. Skeletal development is an issue when we are breathing in toxins, drinking in toxins and eating from land that has toxins in it. We must stand together and rise if we want to get out of this hole. Thank you. a healthy foundation for our children, for our future, we will not be able to move forward. Cognitive development is an issue. Muscular development is an issue. Skeletal development is an issue when we are breathing in toxins, drinking in toxins, and eating from land that has toxins in it. We must stand together and rise if we want to get out of this hole. Thank you.
Thank you. Dylan Burdette.
Hello. I'm here to urge you to vote in favor to authorize the intergovernmental agreement with the IEPA for ethylene oxide air testing on the agenda for tonight. The previous round of air testing showed us that despite Medline's upgrades, we were still being exposed to dangerously high levels of this potent mutagen and carcinogen. This air testing was also important to spur new legislation at the state level, HB 3888 and 85, and 3885. As Diana mentioned, I don't know if those bills are going to pass, but without this most recent round of air testing, it wouldn't have been proposed in the first place. The levels found in the latest round of air testing, in conjunction with the other issues that we face as an environmental justice community, are the reason that the Union of Concerned Scientists are sending me to speak in DC as a representative of Clean Power Lake County. And as we move forward, despite all of these facts, what we need to keep in mind is that both of these companies are still operating as normal. This is what it means for us to live in an environmental justice community. Everyone now knows how much we are being poisoned and by who, but we are still unprotected at both the state and the federal level. So until we can get some protection, we have to continue to monitor and document what is being done to the people in our community. And moving forward, we have to try to continue and hold businesses accountable as they trade our lives for short-term profits. Thank you.
Thank you. Clyde McLemore, Dave Heikala, Daniel Hartman, Jonathan Gaskill. You'll be coming up next. Clyde McLemore, Dave Heikala, Daniel Hartman, Jonathan Gaskill.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I come again in just two weeks left for the biggest event in Lake County, the Black Lives Matter Community Awards Banquet, Moving the Millennials. This is our 4th event, and I am here to invite the community. It's a black tie affair to show the youth how to dress. This year, we will be honoring some local people in our community who has went over and beyond to build our community on a positive note. Last council meeting, I watched the video and saw that there was a confusion on this event. This event has been very positive in educating our community that Black Lives Matter chapter is not and what people are led to believe. As the founder of this movement, in order for our community to grow, we must work together. Meaning, I personally reach out to every police department in Lake County to build relationships with mayor, school board, council members, county board members. Television kind of gave Black Lives Matter a bad taste in the beginning. But we're not anti-cop. However, we are anti-bad cop. This year, our top award, which is the Eddie Washington Award, will be honored to a Waukegan police officer. Each year, police chiefs from different cities have attended, and each year, they come back. This is a community event, a peaceful event. Even when I lead a protest, it's always peaceful. But with working relationships with different people, and protests don't have to solve differences. Just this Saturday, our state rep in Black Lives Matter took three busload of childrens to the Universal Soul Circus. We are currently collaborating with local libraries to implement chess and mathematics programs, which are objective to improve chess and math literacy. This is what Black Lives Matter is doing. So again, I ask you to support this event. Tickets are $55, and yes, there will be soul food will be served. I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Dave Heikala.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and other city leaders.
Put the mic down. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dave Heikala. I wasn't able to be here for the last meeting last Thursday night. I had other obligations, so I don't know if this was brought up then. I read the Johnson consultant report. One thing that threw me was how he came to those conclusions, rank ordering the casino bids, how he derived the figures. It seemed to me that he had some sort of formula for weighing different criteria, and that wasn't described in the report. I think I saw your Facebook post where you mentioned how much the report cost the city taxpayers?
No.
$43,000?
$45,000.
And I just wonder, for the purpose of transparency, if there's going to be other consultant reports in the future, that that kind of information be contained in consultant reports, how they derive their findings? And also, if Mr. Johnson uses that same formula for any other consultant kind of report that he does along these lines, if it was geared toward the city of Waukegan versus some other community? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Daniel Hartman.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir. City Council, in the name of Jesus Christ. My name is Daniel Hartman, proud citizen of North Chicago for the past 10 years, and also minister at the sign of the Dove Church. Two weeks ago, many of us came out in these hoodies for two purposes. Our first purpose was to repent. We've repented before God, and we wanted to repent for you, for our lack of community engagement. We want to do better. We want to be better. Secondly, we committed to a vision. While we opposed the casino, we committed to a much larger vision of being for our community, being for Waukegan. A few minutes ago, you heard the songs rising up from just underneath these chambers. We didn't want to be a disruption, so we moved a little bit down the sidewalk here. And we gathered to worship God, and we gathered to pray. We believe God has great plans for this city, and the Bible tells us to pray for our leaders. So we came out here to pray for you and to pray for our city. We believe that God will work wonders. As we turn to Him, we believe He will bring revival. And we look forward to what it looks like to continue to collaborate together as best we can, and to be able to move forward together for the great plans that God has for this city. So thank you for hearing us out, and just wanted to let you know that downstairs, it wasn't a protest, but it was to attest to who God is and what we believe for the future of Waukegan. Amen.
Thank you. Jonathan Gaskill.
Good evening, good people of Waukegan, esteemed mayor and honorable alderman. My name is Jonathan Gaskill. I'm the Assistant Director at the Waukegan Public Library. I love the fall. I love... Two of my favorite holidays happen to fall within the fall. Halloween, of course, and Thanksgiving. And it's here this evening that I come to give thanks. First of all, for the city allowing us to place a bike rack on the sidewalk, or close to the sidewalk. It's appreciated. Bicycles are not being stolen as much because of a bike rack. And also, we are loaning bike locks. If you want to borrow a bike lock, you don't even need a library card. Just come borrow a bike lock, okay? It's much easier than having your bicycle stolen. Second, I wanted to bring a few dates to you. We are participating in the city's trick-or-treating at the library between the hours of 2:00 and 5:00. Please stop in. We don't have a porch light, but come and get some candy and perhaps a pencil, or maybe even a bookmark. God forbid, a bookmark at the library. We have the Ray Bradbury Storytelling Festival coming up on October 30th at the library at 6:00 PM. We also have staff training coming up on the 1st of November. That's a Friday. Friday, November 4th, the library will be closed for the staff to better their skills, knowledge, and abilities, and to be able to better serve you. So last but certainly not least, I wanted to mention, and thanks to, as the mayor called, the Divine Nine, what a wonderful program to gather up warmth for children. We are also going to be having a mitten tree again this year at the library that kids and people can come and help themselves. Anybody who needs a hat, a glove, or a scarf, or whatever people happen to put on the tree, they're welcome to it. We're grateful to be a part of Waukegan and grateful to serve you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. The last group will be Peggy Jones, Rosie Munoz, Karen Long-McLeod, and Margaret Carrasco. It's Peggy Jones, Rosie Munoz, Karen Long-McLeod, and Margaret Carrasco.
Good evening, mayor and city councilman. I'm Peggy Jones with Faith in Place, and I just came out tonight to share with you all about an event that we're hosting. It is a farmer's market. It is going to be held at St. Paul's Lutheran Church at 824 North Lewis Avenue, Saturday, December 7th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And in addition to that, Faith in Place has co-partnered with ComEd to roll out in the Waukegan area an eco-advocate energy efficiency program. This program is designed to educate the community on how to change their habits and reduce their energy usage, thereby saving them money and lowering their utility bills. It's a free program, and I'm going to hand this out so you all can each have one of them. And also, we ask that you come out and support us. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosie Munoz.
Now, Ms. Jones, 824 North Lewis is directly across from Whittier, correct?
Yes.
Whittier. Just want everybody to know, it's the church directly across from Whittier Elementary School. It helps. Believe me when I tell you.
Is that December 27th?
December 7th.
December 7th? And what was the time again, Peggy?
It's 9 to 1. Got it on the sheet. It is actually November 16.
Oh.
Did you say 15th or 16th?
26.
November 16.
Yeah, there's two things.
Oh, I see. Here.
9 to 1.
9 to 1.
No, this is 11 to 12.
Well, the change your habits, and then there's the farmer's market.
Oh, okay. I got it. It's on the paper.
It's going to be cold out there in Waukegan. I'm just telling you. A little chilly out. All right. Sorry about that. We want to get that cleared up. Go ahead, ma'am.
All righty. Hi, my name is Rosie Munoz. I do have a lot to say, but what I have to say is important. So I am a resident of Lake County. So I have recently read in the newspaper that Potawatomi Casino, as we saw tonight, is trying to have a revote tonight so that they can be sent down to the Illinois Gaming Board. They said that they have a signed letter by three city council members stating that they wish to have the issue reconsidered at today's meeting, as we previously heard today. This appears yet another violation of the RFP process. Page 6 of the city's RFP is clear. Project teams shall not, number one, hold any meeting, conferences, or discussions with any Waukegan city council members involved in the RFP process, or any Lake County, City of North Chicago, or City of Park City representatives. And number two, communicate in any manner with the individuals listed above. Now, how could the Potawatomi have secured a signed letter by three city council members stating that they wish to have the issue reconsidered without holding a meeting, conference, discussions, or communicating in any manner with members of the city council? It seems highly unlikely, and the rules of the RFP are still in effect until negotiations are complete. The RFP is again clear when it says violations of these provisions will constitute grounds for rejection. Potawatomi is now the second bidder who has likely violated the city's RFP process. I remind you, two weeks ago, I brought the previous violation allegation to your attention. And at the public hearing, the Park City Mayor and representative from North Chicago's mayor office read statements endorsing Rivers. Through FOIA, I now know where these statements came from. At SenatorTerryLink.com, who appeared to have forwarded this information from an agent of Rivers. But it's no surprise. Terry Link and Alan Ludwig, who teamed up with Rivers, are suing the city of Waukegan to enforce their good old boy agreement from 15 years ago and have been doing this sort of stuff for years. Potential violations like this put Waukegan's license in serious jeopardy. We lost out on a casino before due to shady ethics. And these questions will be of concern to the Gaming Board. Let's hope you all have not already sent one potential damaging proposal to the Gaming Board that could put us all into jeopardy. So if you are doing motions to reconsider tonight, you might as well reconsider the Rivers proposal as well. It will only take someone who voted to advance Rivers to motion to reconsider them. One alderman asked the question about ethics last week. Well, ethics are following the rules and making sure that the process is fair. The people of Waukegan are counting on a fair and transparent process. Those who violate this process should not be rewarded. It is neither fair nor transparent for this council to reconsider the Potawatomi proposal, not just because likely violated the RFP process, but because they came in dead last of four, and even with their shy revenues and jobs, I still say...
Thank you, Ms. Munoz.
...bit local.
Karen Long-McLloyd.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Karen Long-McLeod. I'm here tonight as a Waukegan resident and also as a volunteer leader of Clean Power Lake County. As many of you know, Clean Power Lake County has been working for almost a year to educate community members about the dangers of ethylene oxide in our community. And we've also been working with elected officials at local and state levels to take all legal steps to protect residents' health. Therefore, we look forward to the council approving the resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency to provide for ambient air sampling for ethylene oxide. CPLC looks forward to continuing to work with the city and other stakeholders to address the emission of toxic ethylene oxide in our air. Second, we are pleased that Waukegan is participating in the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus Greenest Region Corps program, which has made it possible to hire a sustainability coordinator to advance sustainability initiatives in our community. Clean Power Lake County looks forward to collaborating with MIA to bring Waukegan to 100% renewable energy, which is key to making Waukegan a strong and vibrant community. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Carrasco.
Margaret Carrasco. On October 17th, I formally filed an emergency ethics violation complaint under Rule 3000.190 of the Illinois Gaming Act, Public Act 101-0031, against the casino selection process in the city of Waukegan. Some of the issues have been raised today, and there's many more. Michael Bond, Tap Room Gaming and its affiliates, North Point Casino. The number-one reason why I did that, I mean, always when there's competition, there's controversies on both sides, okay? But this one just stuck out like a sore thumb. It was very alarming, and I think very disrespectful to Waukegan community. I received in writing from a local business, the Milan Banquet Hall, a business that's located adjacent to the proposed casino site, in which they contacted me and shared this with me, and I'll just read this to you briefly, in which they are alleging that Mr. Bond told them they had to sell their building to them, that it was either to be... they had to be with him or against him, but with him, that either way, he was going to be their biggest competition, so they needed to be on his side. And then the last one, which is just really something else. Supposedly, he said that he was going to wipe out, yes, wipe out, all the businesses in the area. Really? Next, I filed it because I filed a complaint with the Illinois Attorney General, consumer fraud complaint. Because when I did analysis from the state, their data of their video gaming terminals of how much winnings they have, well, guess what? Waukegan and North Chicago, when you break it down per machine, they're paying out less. By my calculation, $685,000 less. Got a lot of explaining to do. Influenced peddling, improper influence of public officials. Therefore, in closing, I'm asking, request that Illinois Gaming Board disqualify North Point Casino bidder. Revoke the license of Tap Room Gaming and ban Michael Bond, and I'm glad his representatives are here. Hi. To operate in the aspect of gaming or in any conjunction with any other entities in the state of Illinois. It is insulting to every resident of Waukegan that you allow one of the bidders consider them when they are threatening our local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the audience time, sir. That concludes.
Your Honor.
Alderman Moiseo.
I would like to move item 8 up before we take the consent agenda, if possible. I know there's nothing on it, but I think...
Item 9, 9A. 9A. 9A.
Eight. Old business.
Old business. Okay.
I'd like to move that up right now.
Okay, there's a motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Florian, to move item 8 before the consent agenda. Any question to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
There's a motion on the...
There's a motion on the floor.
All right.
By Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Florian, to reconsider...
No, don't put me as number 1 on that.
Number 2, your honor.
I'll second it, but I can't, I can't, I can't make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Moiseo, to reconsider the proposal presented by Potawatomi Casinos, is that correct? Did I pronounce that correctly? I'm gonna make sure for the... Are there any questions to the motion?
No, but a couple of comments, Your Honor.
Alderman Moiseo.
The whole reason this started was that their quote, or whatever you want to say, for the land was misrepresented. It was never $5 or $6 million. It was 12. Or what they, in the proposal, they didn't have a number because it was, it was gonna be on the assess. We have a number out there of 5, but I don't, I don't think this was done, what's the word? It wasn't malicious or anything by any party. It was just miscommunicated. Because I don't think anybody knew what the value of the land was, and how much they were gonna pay, so a $6 million figure got stuck on it, which is not accurate. That's not what they're gonna pay for it. And the people I talked to, obviously around the community that are for the casino, they were saying, well, that, well, why would you, why would you support something that's $6 million when you have $30 million on the table, and $22 million in 14, you know? So, their proposal was misrepresented. So, in lieu of that, that's why I think we need to revote this with more accurate information. The most accurate information is that they're not gonna pay 6, they're gonna pay 12, cash. So, I think that, that we need to do that, obviously there is a motion on the floor, so we're gonna vote it anyway. But that is my reasoning for this, is, again, everybody wants transparency, and everybody wants honesty, well, their proposal was misrepresented. And I don't think purposely, but it was. So we need to make it right, and revote it with new information.
Alderman Florian.
I agree with, with what Alderman Moiseo said. I feel that we need to make sure we vote knowing all the information that was before us. We, as a council, voted to send 3 proposals. I think we should just send all 4, and let the state sort it out, and let the chips fall where they may. No pun intended.
Let the chips fall in Waukegan.
Yes, I know that.
May that work. But, okay, is that it?
Mayor, I have comments.
All right, we have, we have Alderman Bolton, so Alderman Turner, and then Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Bolton.
My conversation with Representative Potawatomi, when they came to me, I was saying, okay, we want more than just a casino and a hotel. We want other components, such as entertainment, conference centers, and restaurants. And so I asked the gentleman, if you're going, you want us to reconsider, would you be reconsider, including those factors and those components? And so, but anyway, I would like to support reconsidering of this vote, if you, as alderman, would commit to selling the property to whomever is receiving the license.
Two different things. Nope.
Let's be clear, are you saying you're willing to reconsider that, if those items of conference center, along with restaurants, be added to their proposal? At the same time, if the aldermen who are asking for the reconsideration will then commit to, once, if it goes through, that it includes the selling of the land with this vote? Is that what you're asking, ma'am?
That's what I'm asking.
All right, then.
Your Honor.
I would consider.
Let's go, let's go to Alderman Turner, Kirkwood, and back to you. Alderman Turner.
Thank you very much. So, I heard what Alderman Moiseo stated regards the adjusted, or allegedly corrected, offer for land out at Fountain Square. And I don't know where that $12 million comes from, what, you know, their, their offer was plus or minus, which didn't make any sense, but plus 15% of the assessed value of the land. And I don't know what assessment they were using, but the assessment that I'm aware of was 5.256 million for the land, which would have put their bid at just under $6 million. That would have been, I believe, the lowest bid. Also, there was another bid, we keep hearing this $30 million bid. There was never a $30 million bid. There was an offer of a 99-year lease at 2.5% of the gross revenue from the gaming, or $3 million per year, and the option for that entity to buy the land at their leisure, their pleasure, for $30 million somewhere down the line. City is not trying to lease that land. We have over 300 properties on, that we own, that are not on a tax roll. We're trying to get an assessment, trying to get all of those properties back on the tax roll. Wouldn't even make sense for us to consider a lease, so take that one off the table. That leaves you with 2 other bids, and I believe the other one was 7 million off the top, and then there was 22 million, right, with a $10 million upfront, and, and $1 million a year for the next 12 years?
Yes.
Something like that, right? So that was the highest bid. And as I said before, and I'll say it again, we should be looking at this strictly as a land deal, because everything else is subjective. You know, I, I bet you I can make more money doing this, and, and it's a bet on a bet, it's a gamble on a gamble, right? It's all subjective, it's all best wishes and estimations, right? I don't like it. I think we should go with the highest bid for the land. That's my thought there. Now, if you consider this request for reconsideration, I'm gonna tell you that there was a cutoff date for proposals, that was August 5th. And then here comes October 4th, and they say, Jiminy Cricket, we'd like to revise our, our proposal. I don't like that either. The city had set that deadline, they met the deadline, and they, once everybody else's proposals were in, then they want to come back with an additional proposal. And they're allegedly changing their offer now to up to $12 million for the land. I already spoke to that. When I reviewed those proposals, I didn't see a site plan from Potawatomi, none. And that was to be included in the proposal. That was listed as a part of the RFP, request for proposal, or request for qualifications. No site plan.
It's in there.
He had a lot of descriptions of restaurants and so forth and so on, but no details about their site plan. And then they did not offer a temporary casino, right? So here's what happens, when, when the license is awarded to somebody, that entity can immediately open a temporary casino with up to 200 gaming seats, right? Potawatomi didn't want to open a temporary casino. Yeah, I have some other bullet points, but I think I'm gonna leave it at that. And I just want to go back and reiterate, I think we should go with the land sale. Best offer on the table for the land is $22 million. However, and this is not a after the proposal, not in addition to the proposal that came later, but as part of that proposal, that offer was 22 million cash over the years for the land, and an additional 28 million, right, for charitable or philanthropic purposes. $50 million, 10 times the assessed value of the land. That's what's on the table, and that's what I'm gonna vote for. Thank you.
Alderman Kirkwood.
I'll pass to Alderman. Moiseo for now.
Alderman Moiseo.
The task at hand here is whether we vote to reconsider to certify Potawatomi to go. Anything after that, and all due respect to Alderman Bolton, is that we can't, we can't make promises, what we can do up here, that's not how we operate. It's just, this is whether or not we should send them down with corrected information of what they were gonna buy for the land, which is 12 million. If I'm not mistaken, land is not assessed, it's vacant, it's how much you're gonna put into the property. That's how it's assessed, am I right on that? How much, if it's $300 million, then the value of the land is a lot more than just a cornfield of 5 million. So, irregardless of the fact, there was enough, there's nothing specific that says what they were gonna pay for the land, in the, they said they were gonna pay 6 million. I think our consultant just took that, because that's, that's the, that's the assessed value that our staff had. I'd like to know where Mr. Johnson got the figure of $6 million, irregardless of that fact, we're not gonna wait around on that. We need to vote this on whether or not, I don't think they got a fair shake because they were misrepresented. And I've been up here long enough to know that when you're not equal and fair to people, you go across the street.
Greg, if I...
I've been up here, and you know what? And, now you're gonna, and you know 2 armed bandits. I'm referencing my good friend Lawrence Tempest. Those are lawyers. At the end of the day, those are the only guys that get paid. We can go over there, we can get sued, we can have that phial just churning away at $500 an hour, or whatever it's gonna cost to represent a lawyer, when it's an easy vote to send them down. You're sending 3, you might as well send 4, what difference does it make? Let the Illinois Gaming Board figure it out. But no, you can go across the street, tie up everybody over there, start writing checks to lawyers, because that's what you're gonna do. Remember, they get paid to argue. They'll argue all damn day if you let them. So send 4, what difference does it make at the end of the day?
Well, Greg, if we send them all down, what was the point in us even vetting them and taking proposals? We should have just sent them down here.
We don't, we don't know what the, what the Illinois Gaming Board could do. They could send all 4 back to us and tell us to pick them.
That's right.
They're unclear on what they're gonna do. They could also start negotiations and a bidding process between those 4 and say, okay...
Right.
I, I don't know. Who knows with the state? I don't know.
Right, we don't know, we own and control what we do. And I just want to point, answer your question about the $6 million. So the land was assessed at 5.256 million, 15% would have rose, lifted that to 5,744, 748,000, something like that, right? So you rounded around to $6 million for ease of speaking to it, right? So $6 million on the table, offered from Potawatomi, 7 million from somebody else, 22 from another...
12, cash. Their offer is 12 cash.
Now, after they're revising their proposal, their bid...
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Right now, we have Alderman Kirkwood, Alderman Kirkwood has the floor.
Mayor, I guess, you know, my, my concern is that, on, on many fronts. First of all, as a council member, we were told not to hold conversations with any of the members of the casino. If we do so, we need to report it.
I reported it.
And I'm extremely concerned about Potawatomi's response to our vote last week, accusing us of not having all the information and properly being denied, while they're ignoring that there are legitimate concerns about their proposal. Some of the concerns I have, I don't know about my colleagues, but if not all, I have been convinced that Potawatomi and Rivers has the most experience in gaming. And yet and still, Potawatomi had the least information at the time that I looked at the information, and there's a number of reasons that I did not and would not support the Potawatomi proposal for Waukegan Casino. The city had a deadline, as Alderman Turner spoke, about submitting proposals. So now, all of a sudden, over the weekend, I was bombarded with telephone calls, emails, after the fact, about reconsidering the vote. I based my vote on the original proposal, which is what the city had asked the consultant to do. Now, I wasn't involved in the process of ranking or anything of that, but Potawatomi changed their purchase offer, but their original offer was about 6 million. Now we say it's 12 million. If we do something for one, we must do it for everyone. Potawatomi's original proposal didn't show a site plan like Alderman Turner pointed out. Now it does. The response is, we're not able to prepare a detailed proposal right now. Then we come back and we get it. So my concern is that if we let one do it, we let everyone do it. Alderman Moiseo said, send them all down. Then why have we been wasting our time up here doing all this? We talk about transparency. That's not being transparent. If we do it for one, we must do it for all. I've heard all the arguments. And I believe that Potawatomi didn't offer not only a temporary facility, but didn't get things on time. Now, if there's, Corporation Council can say, hey, you know, we aired, okay, we can revoke, but I haven't heard that. I'm concerned that, I'm not worried about nobody bullying me or the city. Yeah, we got 2 armed bandits, you know, you know, we got, we got all those all around. There's some sitting in here right now. But the bottom line is that we gotta do what's best for the city of Waukegan, not because we get a group of people speaking on behalf of any casino. I think I told you when I first got here, I can't be bought, and I can't be sold. And, and that's, that stays always. But we need to move on so that we can get things going for the city of Waukegan.
There's a motion on the floor, motion by Alderman, Alderman Taylor.
For me personally, I don't, because I don't know when this change took place, I can't tell you whether we're not giving them a voice or not. What I will say is, my position hasn't changed. I will stay true to my residents like I did last week. My position didn't change. I represent my residents, and I will always vote the way the majority of them tell me they want me to vote. So I have been very honest with everybody about that. I don't think anybody can say that, well, if I reconsider something, that it would eventually change my vote. But I do think when you're talking about assessing land and everything like that, let's just be honest, at Fountain Square, you had 10 acres bought by a partner in Tap Room Gaming that bought the property that at one time was assessed at 1.2 to 1.4 million, bought it for 975,000, and immediately had the tax assessor reassess it for 735,000. So that lowered everybody's value. And I would love to have my property reassessed like that, and magically that happened. So let's just be upfront and say, we don't know what that property value is worth, because that 10 acres changed everything for everybody. So at this point, I think we just go and vote and move on with it.
Let's be clear, and thank you for that, let's be clear. We received an appraisal on ours. What other people do is not our business. But we received an appraisal on that property, and that appraisal came out to be 5.6...
5.256.
5.25.
5.6, 5.7 million dollars. That's what we, it was assessed for us. Now, what people want to pay for it, then, you know, that, let the process begin, but I want to be very clear as to what our understanding of our roughly 32, 30 to 32 acres, 30 to 32 acres was assessed at. That's, that's all I want to be clear. The argument of whether reconsideration is not that, but we, as we knew it, and I think it was attached to the RFQ, that property was assessed at by, I want to think, is it Leach? Leach and Associates, right, Noel? Leach and Associates? And that's all we had. What others chose to say what they will and won't pay for it, that should have been part of the proposals. If I'm not mistaken, I think even Alderman were even emailed, and you had those, you did get them, right? Everybody did get the supplemental, it just wasn't part of the report. But you knew about it, correct? We all knew about it. We all knew about it. So to say that you didn't get it, it just wasn't part of the report, but you did get it.
I've never said I didn't.
Oh, well, it was, well, it's being, it's being alleged that we did not get it or was not aware of it.
But it should've been in the report for the public to see.
Our consultant said 6 million dollars. Hold on a second, wait a minute. Then if you wanna, it should not have been in the report though, ma'am. What should've been in the report is what was given to us at the time. What should've been in the report is what they gave to us at that time. That's what we were obligated to, that's what we put out to. Now, if we wanna reconsider of adding that to the report, then we should've made that decision, and we did not. So to your point, we should not have done that. So if, now if that's the case, Alderman, each and every time that there is an RFQ or RFP that goes out, what are we going to do? Are we gonna ask if it comes back, we can then reconsider those? Because that's the same thing.
I think that's something that, obviously, I think this is gonna end up being a legal issue, and it's just, if we wanna reconsider it, let's just vote on that tonight.
And I agree with you, but I, I guess I wanted to say about our process, because that's what I'm defending, is the city of Waukegan's process. And that process wasn't flawed, it wasn't wrong, it was based on the information that we put out and that we all agreed on. Now, if we chose to change that agreement, then we should've, we should've done so at the time. But I'm here to let you all know, we, as the city of Waukegan, did nothing wrong. We did it by our standards that we put out. At this time, Alderman, you're asking to reconsider, but please, I know Jim is in the audience, do not say that our process was incorrect. Do not say that we did not give what we should've been, that what was the information, that we didn't put it in it. We did. There was other things added to that was not a part of the original agreement. Our process was correct. That's what we must defend. Our staff, they did the very best of making sure that only you and others was disseminating the information that was given to us in the timeframe. That's what I'm defending. So staff, understand, this mayor, and I would, I would openly say, all the Aldermen said, "You did the right thing. You followed the right process." There was other information that wanted to be a part of that, unfortunately, with the report, but they still received the information. And we can all say that without a doubt. So to Alderman Taylor's point, let's go on reconsidering. When we reconsider, we might reconsider all the information that has been presented, and that's a decision by us tonight.
Is there a motion on the floor to reconsider?
There is a motion on the floor. There's a motion by Alderman Florian, and second by Alderman Mozio to reconsider. There could be two, two votes here. One, right now, an "aye" vote would be to reconsider, is that correct? A "no" vote is not to reconsider. Are we clear? All right. Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
This is so confusing. Not only for me, but to everybody.
Put your mic on. Okay. Again, a, a "no" vote is "no" to reconsider. A "yes" vote is to "yes" to reconsider. That's the only thing on the-
Yes.
He said yes. Yes? Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
No.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
No.
What's the count?
Five "no's," four "yes."
The, the five "no's" means "no" to reconsider. It was four, the vote is five to four. The vote, the reconsider fails for a lack of vote. All right? So there it is. There, we are not reconsidering this proposal. All right? Alderman Taylor.
Since I said that they should reconsider, or that I, my guess is they're probably gonna say something, so I'll just say, I'll change that vote to a "yes" and let them reconsider it, and we'll move on. I don't know if I can do that, but, no. It's, I just wanna make sure everybody's gone through due process.
Wow. Is it five, four?
Can't. Once you vote, you vote.
All right. At this point in time, Alderman, Alderman Taylor has changed her vote from a, a "no" vote, a "no" to reconsider, to a "yes" vote to reconsider. With that being said, the vote changes, the vote changes to a five to four to reconsider.
Your lord.
All right? So there's a, now that, now that they're reconsidering, now there's a vote on the floor to vote to send down Potawatomi's position.
You can change your vote?
Yeah.
Mayor, repeat that again.
Right now, there's the vote on the floor. Uh-oh, I'm being told what to read here. All right. Here's the motion, everybody. Motion to approve-
Attention, please.
Right now, there's the motion, Alderman. A motion to approve a resolution certifying Potawatomi's proposal, excuse me, everybody, proposal for a riverboat gaming license to the Illinois Gaming Board. Again, a motion to approve a resolution certifying Potawatomi's proposal for a riverboat game, gaming license to Illinois Gaming Board. There's a motion by Alderman Florian, and a second by Alderman Taylor to send down, to certify Potawatomi's proposal to-
Wait, wait, wait. This is to send the vote down?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'll second it. You don't wanna second the vote. Alderman, first, a motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Mozio to certify, to approve a resolution certifying Potawatomi's proposal for a riverboat gaming license to the Illinois Gaming Board. So a "aye" vote will be to approve, meaning to certify Potawatomi's to send down to the Illinois, that's "aye," is that correct?
Yes.
A "no" vote is not to send down. Is everyone clear?
Yep.
Alderman Seager, a "aye" vote is to- He said he was confused. I'm trying to make sure he understands. So if you say "aye," that means "yes" to certify, to send down. If you say "no," it is not to send down. That is the motion on the floor. Motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Mozio. Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
No.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
No.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Alderman Florian.
Yes.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
No.
All right. The, the-
Six, six.
Six, three, the motion fails.
Thank you.
All right.
I need that motion.
There's a motion by, motion by, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Mozio to move item 9A, 9A, to the consent agenda. 9A is a resolution authorizing to government agreement with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency to provide ambient air sampling for ethylene oxide. So this is just to move it to the consent agenda, everyone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move it to the consent agenda.
We just moved it to the consent agenda, okay?
Okay.
All right. Now, we are now in item four, which now will include items 9A.
So just four? We going with just four?
Yes.
Three, four.
So there's a motion on the floor for the consent agenda. Motion by Alderman Newsom again, and second by Alderman Turner. Shh. Attention.
I can't hear.
Again, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Turner, to approve the consent agenda for the following items. Items 4A, B, C.
C, come out.
All right. I'm, I'm sorry. Are there any items that need to come out besides C for the Aldermen? Okay. Items 4A, B, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T. Oh, we going to alphabet. All right. Along with items 9A. Are there any further questions on the items on the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, you wanna take half and I'll take half?
Okay.
All right. You take the, I'll take the first up to items A through B and D through I, okay? And you'll take the other one. There's a lot of items here, that's why we're doing this. Items 4A, motion to authorize property city officials to approve change order one in amount of 150,000 with T.O.B. group consulting engineers for the continuation of fiscal 2019 bridge and covert engineering task. Order resulted in a revised contract amount of 285,100. The contract was originally approved in February 20, 2018 in the amount of 135,110. Item B, motion to grant an exception to the competitive bidding process pursuant to section 2-45I3 Government Joint Purchasing Act and approve the award of the contract Westside tractor sales in amount of 153,161.41 for the purchase of a 2019 John Deere 6FFKFT4 four-wheel-drive loader with accessories, warranties, less trading, and discount. This project utilizes 2018B general obligation bonds. Item D, 4D, motion to grant an exception to the competitive bid process pursuant to section 2-451 parentheses I, parentheses C, Government Joint Purchasing Act and approve the award of a contract to Packer City International Trucks in amount of 166,961.31 for the purchase of a, of a snow plow truck with spreader. This project utilizes 2018B general obligation bonds. Item E, motion to grant an exception to the competitive bid process pursuant to section 2-45 parentheses I, parentheses 3, Government Joint Purchasing Act and approve the award of a contract to carry commercial in amount of 305,266 for the purchase of six 2024 F250 four-by-four SD supercab trucks. This project utilizes 2018B general obligation bond funds. Items 4F, motion to approve the award of a contract to Campanella and Sons lowest qualified bidder in order to make rugby court water main improvements in amount of 147,488.15. This project utilizes 2018C water and sewer bond funds. Items 4G, motion to grant an exception to the competitive bid process pursuant to section 2-458I, parentheses I, parentheses seven, good faith waiver and approve the award of a contract to Chicago Communications in order to make, to make install a wireless backhaul infrastructure at the water plant in amount of 70,000. This project utilizes 2018C water and sewer bond funds. Item 4H, motion to authorize property city officials to renew the agreement with Data Management, Inc. for the time clock plus for the, for a period of two years and to provide for onsite training for the time attendance system in the amount not to exceed 37,660. Item 4I, motion to authorize the Director of Planning and Economic Development to make formal applications for a grant requiring a disbursement of reimbursable funds and/or a local match required with Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning CMAP Local Technical Assistant LTA program.
4, 4J, motion to approve zoning calendar number 2590, planned development Barwell Manor. 4K, motion to approve zoning calendar number 2591, map amendment rezoning, 612 South Genesee Street. 4L, motion to approve zoning calendar number 2593, text amendments to the city of Waukegan zoning ordinance, providing for single-room occupancy units and other affordable housing by amending articles 7, 8, 9, 10, 12, and 13. 4M, motion to approve regular payroll dated October 11, 2019 in the total amount of Item 4N, motion to approve PBLC holiday buyback payroll dated October 11, 2019 in the total amount of 9,904.32. 4O, motion to approve IAFF Uniform Allowance Payroll dated October 11, 2019 in the total amount of 55,500. Item 4P, motion to approve elected official and civil service type and payroll dated October 11, 2019 in the total amount of 6,566.66. Item Q, motion to approve final payouts, Lyons E. Uloa, A. Flores A., dated October 11, 2019 in the total amount of 69,984.68. Item 4R, motion to approve retro payroll for S. Martinez and R. Nemec dated October 11, 2019 in the total amount of 1,859.55. Item 4S, motion to approve vendor payments dated October 21, 2019 in the total amount Item 4T, motion to approve all raffle sale applications. Item 9A, motion to approve, as presented, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency to provide for ambient air sampling for ethylene oxide.
Okay. Movements are on the floor. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
All right. All right. There's a motion on the floor, there's a motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Kirkwood, and I'm gonna allow, I'm gonna allow, I'm gonna ask Alderman Newsom to read the motion.
There was an amendment to this agenda item in, in the Finance Purchasing Committee. The motion would read, "Motion to grant an exception to the competitive bidding process pursuant to section 2-458 subsection I3 Government Joint Purchasing Act and approve the award of a contract to Graybar in the amount of 830,000 for the improvement of street lighting as described in the attached scope of work pending staff and legal approval. The project utilizes 2018B general obligation bond funds." And I so move.
Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Okay. We're gonna go to item, item five, Reports and Communication, Annual Treasure Report.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. At this evening's finance meeting, the annual 19, 2018 and 2019 audit was, was presented, has been completed. But to complete the process, I'll read, the Illinois Treasury statutes require the municipal treasurer each year to publish an account of monies received and expenditures occurred within the fiscal year, known as the annual treasure report. I have the treasure report, okay, completed. It will be filed tomorrow with the Waukegan City Clerk, the County Clerk, and the County, County Treasurer, and it will be published in the Waukegan paper within, within a week, and I will report at the next city council when that is. Shortly after the publication or about that time, you'll be able to see it on the Waukegan website. So ends my report on the annual treasure report.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Doc. I'm assuming the monthly one's pretty, already, you need to sing again.
Sorry?
On the monthly treasure report.
Well, the monthly treasure report, okay, it's a, it's a voice vote that, it, I filed that with the clerk- that with the clerk.
Okay.
The county, and the county, okay, the county, not the county board, the county, the council agrees that I've filed it.
All right, all right, motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Seager to approve the monthly treasure report. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion's passing, carry. Item 6, motion by Alderman Newsom, a second by Alderman Taylor to approve an ordinance adopting, adopting and levying the municipal cannabis retailer's occupation tax. Any questions?
Yes.
We're voting on this before we even vote on the allowance of, of retail. I mean, I, if it passes the council, I think we should be able to get the taxes, but.
Well, let's be clear, this, I think from a, from a, from a legal standpoint, we have to do this, oh, you changed on me. You have to do this anyway, so regardless of what we do, I think we need to.
It's a good, it's a good idea to adopt this.
Yeah.
If you, if you never have a dispensary locate in town, you'll never be able to collect the tax, but if you ever do locate one, it'll be taken care of.
So basically, this needs to be on the books.
Okay.
Okay, so this is, this, again, this is not saying that we are for or against, this is just having us the ability to collect the tax on our, on our city of Waukegan books, all right? Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Turner.
So, this is a occupation tax in addition to a sales tax, in addition to business licensing, in addition to signs, everything else, it's simply an additional tax because they're selling reefers.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what the legislature set up in the, in the legislation.
Oh, my.
Haven't heard that word.
Man, I tell you.
All right, that's, it's kinda, it's kinda really out of our ballgame.
Uh, Mayor.
So, Alderman Kirkwood.
So, we're getting the maximum tax, which is 3%.
Yep.
That's correct.
Lord. If we decide to go along with this.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman.
I'm sorry, Alderman Taylor, Florian, did you have your hand up? All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
No tax, no.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Absolutely aye.
I'm sorry, what?
Absolutely aye.
Yep.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
All right, so item, item 6A, motion's passing, carry. Item B, 6B has been held in committee, um, is it committee on the floor?
In committee.
It's been held in committee.
Great job.
All right, item 7, special committee development. All right, motion by Alderman Mozio, second by Alderman Taylor to approve zoning calendar 22594, text amendment to the City of Waukegan ordinance authorizing regulating the legal marketing of adult-use recreational cannabis by amending articles 8, 9, 10, 12, and 13. Are there any questions to the motion? Alderman Taylor. And then Alderman Bolton.
I probably am not the one you want to second this. Here's, here's my issue with this right now, I am not pro or against cannabis, but what I would really like is so many other communities have held public meetings outside of a planning and zoning committee, and I feel like I don't want to put this on a community without them having some kind of public input, so I would at least like to have a public forum where people could express how they feel about it and what their concerns are, and to help answer some of the questions that we answered tonight in terms of, there's a lot of people who don't understand the regulations with this, so I think it would be to our service to do that, and until such time as I feel like the public has, they're still reeling from casinos, I think they need time to kind of absorb this, and at that time, I would, I would consider a, a yes vote, but right now, I would be a no vote until that happened. Your Honor.
All, I'm gonna, Alderman Bolton, then Alderman Mozio, Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I, I agree with that, Alderman Taylor, it should be a public hearing. I was at the public hearing that was on, I believe, the 10th, and I asked that they include the church community along with libraries and childcare, at least 1,000 feet, so, but yes, I agree that there needs to be a public hearing for the churches to represent their opinions.
Alderman Mozio.
I'm for this, it's coming anyway, the communities around you, you're gonna have it anyway, it's, it's happening, but I, I get Alderman Taylor's thing about the community, just understand, usually when you have a community forum, overwhelmingly, it's always people that are against it.
That's right.
People that are for it never come, they're, they're minds, they're for it, it's always people that are against it, and we can have it, that's fine, and we can, that was a great PowerPoint select that Noel and Mr. Durondo put together, there's nothing wrong with that, but it's coming, it, the gurney's gonna get it, uh, Winter Park just passed it, North Chicago's gonna pass it, it's gonna be all around you anyway.
So, already here?
We can say no and let more dollars just seep out of Waukegan, just, we gotta be the most un-business friendly community I've ever been around.
Yep.
Ever.
I agree.
But if, if it, if it would, if it would, we have time till January 1st, let's just hold it over, set up a community, have it here, people wanna come, we'll have a PowerPoint and go from there, if that, at least, you know, let's just do that.
Okay, all right, it sounds like we, we need to put a public.
Make sure we tell them that this is tax revenue, okay? This is tax revenue.
It is, it is, is.
May not be a whole lot, but it's, it's a lot, so again, the question is not whether you want marijuana legal, not whether or not you want a casino, do you want me to keep raising your property taxes, do you want me to lay off firemen, do you want me to lay off police? The question's just not, do you want a casino? Do you want marijuana? We just had a financial report from our CFO, it ain't looking good, people. So, keep letting them dollars fly away.
Okay, all right, are we?
I'll hold it over.
All right, motion by Alderman Mozio to hold item 7A over, and we'll work with staff to put a public meeting together, but it's, I wanna, I wanna be, put on, on everybody's mind, we're, we are under a time sensitive with this January 1, so this public meeting, while you may think is, is too fast, we, we, we're just, this is where we're at, everybody. It was passed, October 1 is when the, the applications went in, luckily, we got a, we got us a small resolution to go with that, but a lot of this is gonna be a makeup as you go, because this is just how the legislation was passed and how, you know, the state kinda put us in that position, it's not a bad, or it was bad for us from a time, and we would love to get in front of us and have a many people, but unfortunately, we can't, and we need to have something on the books, 'cause if I'm not mistaken, if it's not on the books, then.
There's a real problem, then, and what the mayor's talking about is if you, if you don't have an ordinance that bans it, and you don't have an ordinance that zones it and puts conditional uses on it, it can go into any business zone district.
Wow, I like that.
I don't think that's the, I don't think that's the solution any of you are looking for.
So, let's be clear, when we, when we, and Alderman Taylor, I, I know you, you love transparency and you love the fact of getting our citizens there, but sometimes, we are given just, you know, some, sometimes unreasonable situation that we put in, we have to make a decision, so if we do get this public input.
I would do it over the next couple of weeks as fast as we can.
Yeah, and that's, so we're gonna need your help, for those who asking for the, the public meeting, please let your, those who've come to you, let you know, and we're gonna have it in City Hall, and it's probably gonna be the same PowerPoint that Noel gave, and, and please let them know.
Can we aim for like November 11th, when there's not a city council meeting, but that Monday? That's when.
Well, we'll tell you what we're doing, let me get with staff, and we'll go from there, but, but please let everyone know, this is not the city making this, this, we're just reacting to a, some legislation.
Right.
That we need to react to, and that's, that's where we're at, so when they come, don't come badgering or saying that we're bringing this upon our community, we're just making sure that it does not get affected where it can go anywhere in our community, all right? I'm gonna go to Alderman Florian, that's who I saw first, then Alderman Kirkwood, Alderman Florian.
I, I don't think you were in the room for the committee hearing, but I mentioned that I attended the zoning committee meeting, and we were told that that was our public hearing, and I just don't think we did a good enough job of letting people know that was the night they had to come and speak about this.
This is Alderman Bolton, I agree.
Yeah, all, both of us, more Aldermen spoke that night than public citizens, so I just think had we let people know that was their one chance to talk about it, it might have, we might have been able to kill two birds with one stone.
Just a zoning issue. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna respond to that, but I wanna go down to Alderman Kirkwood first.
Well, I was at that meeting also, I, I think that our staff did an excellent job, they did the same thing that Thursday that they did tonight, so it was no different, but my concern is that we cannot continually have meetings after meetings regarding this situation, one meeting, one meeting only, they either come or they don't come, we need to move on, because once again, there's gonna be individuals that are gonna be against it.
I agree.
And they'll show up, but those that are for it, they're not gonna come, so it's another opportunity to generate revenue, and we want it in a certain place, so it's not all over the city, so my concern is that we set that date, and if you can't come, then that's just too bad.
Mayor. Alderman Turner.
Thank you, just real quick, I gotta tell you, biggie a lot about nothing, this is a simple zoning question, it's not a question of should it be legal, should I do cannabis, it's simply a matter of where these facilities will be allowed within our zoning ordinance, changing the zoning book, period, that's it, that's all, so you're making a big deal about nothing.
No, I, I, and Alderman Florian, and I certainly respect your position, but I wanna say, I, I think we wanna be cautious when we say that we did not do a good job of letting the public know.
Let's just let them know.
When our planning and zoning issues come up, we have a process in which we inform typically is those businesses or homes that are within a, either 250 feet or 300 feet of that, that is our position of letting them know. This particular item, we put it out, we publish it, I can't say that we did a bad job, I, I, I think we wanna really take that position, that we did not do a bad job, maybe, and maybe when certain items that come up on that planning and zoning, which we all know about, you can then say to, either in the ward, to some other things that we might wanna say, hey, understand that this cannabis, or casino, or daycare, or such, is gonna be on the planning and zoning, that is your time to come out and speak about it, I wouldn't say we did a bad job, 'cause I think, I think staff does a fantastic job according to the rules that we have in place, now if we wanna change those rules, that's something we can all talk about.
Okay, let me just defend what I said a little bit, I didn't mean to imply it was a bad job, I'm just saying that I don't think the public realized that was the one and only time they were gonna have to speak about this, I'm not saying the staff did something wrong, I'm not saying they did it badly, I, I misspoke when I said that, I'm just saying I don't think, as a result of the normal process we go through, I don't think the public realized that was their one chance to come and speak about that.
And I agree with you, Noel, did you want to add something, chime in a little bit on this? Let's let Noel chime in, because planning and zoning and economic development department handles a lot of our planning and zoning commission agendas.
Yes, just to clarify, in the case of a text amendment like this, because it's an ordinance that's citywide, we don't do that mailing, but the mayor's right, and like we talked about earlier, in the case of a conditional use permit, we do mail certified letters to all the property owners within 250 feet of a particular address where there's a, a request. In the case of a text amendment, as well as in the case of a conditional use permit, we publish a legal notice in the news sign that is published at least 15 days in advance of the hearing for the public to see it. In addition, the Planning and Zoning Commission agendas are posted on board docs at least one week prior to the meeting, unlike most of our other meetings that are posted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, more than 48 hours. Planning and Zoning Commission is always posted at least a week in advance, in this particular case, I believe it was two weeks in advance, but I'm not positive off the top of my head on the dates. Also, when that agenda is posted, there is an email sent to all the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as all the members of the city council from somebody on my staff, notifying all of you and all of them that that agenda has been posted and it's available for you. We also went to great efforts to make sure that the title of this ordinance was very clear in plain language, recreational cannabis, it's not hidden in any jargon or anything, it's out there, public, so people can understand that. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was the official public hearing for this text amendment, as it is for any text amendment to the zoning ordinance, that's the official public hearing. However, the public had that opportunity to comment, they had the opportunity from the public notice to contact either the city clerk's office or the Department of Planning and Zoning to provide oral or written comments, they also had the opportunity at the Community Development Commission, or Community Development Committee, I'm sorry, earlier this evening, to speak during audience time, as well as during this meeting during audience time, so there have been a number of opportunities afforded for that. I'm not opposed to having a public meeting and Douglas and I doing our dog and pony show again, we can do that, but I would ask that that be the one and only thing, because we also have a family, we also have a life with casino and everything, we've spent an awful lot of time in this building, and it would be nice to see my husband without wearing a name tag.
Yes, I hear that, thank you, thank you, but thank you, Alderman Florian, and, and, and we truly understand the hard work that everybody does, and items like this is quite sensitive to all of our communities, but we need to act before it allows to be anywhere according to what our existing text says, okay? That has been held over, item 10, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by, by Alderman Seager, ordinance approving appropriation ta, transfer relative to the annual appropriation adopted, adopted for the May 1, 2018 to April 30, 2019 fiscal year. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion's passing, carry, item 11, Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Mozio.
Just think hard about, we had that from Mr. McGalski, our CFO, we need revenue, if we don't, there is no other way, you're gonna have layoffs and you're gonna have a property tax increase, there is no other way, so you have to frame the question to your constituents, I know we have to listen to our constituents, but our job also is to go back to our constituents with information we have and say, listen, we're 2.7 million in the hole, that's not, she, she spelled out the pension problem, you need new revenue, you need more revenue, we just had somebody on that wants a sales tax rebate, we have two industries that wanna come in and, and give us money. I have a friend of mine that's a teacher, he's not from Waukegan, but he says, you know what, he teaches at the high school, and he says, I've never seen a place that can't get out of its own way, more than Waukegan.
Right, it's Waukegan.
Can't get out of our own way. So, when we go back to our constituents, and you can say, oh, he's just, he is just, no, I've been through these budgets, a lot of them, and there may be people in your wars that don't want it, but then ask them, do you want me to raise your property taxes? Do you want me to lay off people? There is no other way around it. Go sit down with Tina and ask her, she'll tell you, this is what we're gonna have to do, this, we're gonna have to levy taxes, this is how much money we got coming in, yada, yada, yada. So, you need to think about that, we need to listen to the, our constituents, absolutely, but we gotta bring back information to them and let them know, this is what'll happen if, this is what'll happen if, this is what'll happen if. I just don't wanna be put in a box where, come May, well, I, I didn't know, we didn't know, no, we told you, this is what was gonna happen.
Right.
That's it.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, couple things, in the fourth ward, on November the 9th, we're gonna have the family photo day where you'll get a free 8x10, we ask that you wear your Sunday best, it'll be held at the Waukegan High School Washington Campus, which is located at 1011 Washington.
Washington Street. It'll be posted on my Facebook page. You have until November the 6th to sign up. There's a QR form there that will help you navigate through that system. Also, want to make sure we reiterate the leaf pickup. If you go online, you will see that also. Also, I want to point out that as a council, we try to make the best decisions that we can for all of our citizens, but it's important that citizens get involved, more than just a shouting match and saying how you don't like things. We all want lighting, roads fixed, infrastructures where you're flooding at, and everything else, but the bottom line is, don't raise my taxes. And that's not going to happen, because if we don't have revenue coming in, your taxes will be raised. And I know some of us here says, no taxes? Well, then we're going to be a crumbling city...
No taxes.
...if we don't get revenue coming into the city. So we need to keep that in mind. We need to look for other ways to generate revenue. Thank you.
Alderman Newsome.
Thank you. I want to announce again, fifth ward, Operation Clean Sweep, it's going to be Thursday, October the 31st. The dumpster drop-off will be at Delaware and Greenwood from 8:00 to 3:00 p.m. If you have any questions regarding what you can or can't, items you can't put in the dumpster, feel free to give me a call. And also, I wanted to announce the 67th Annual Pancake Day for the Waukegan Exchange Club. It's going to be Saturday, October 26th at Bonnie Brook. The time will be from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and it is all-you-can-eat pancakes, sausage, milk, juice, coffee.
How much?
The tickets are $7 each for adults, $3 for children, 5 to 12. Under 5 is free. It's going to be Bonnie Brook. And I'd like to say that all, Saturday, I like to say that all the proceeds go to, into our benevolent fund, which is a fund for the prevention of child abuse, and is given out to different organizations come next year in May. Also, there are sponsorship opportunities as well. If you'd like to sponsor or purchase tickets, feel free to give me a call, 847-494-4190. Thank you. That's all I have.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you. So in the sixth ward, I'm happy to report that we've been making some progress along the Greenwood corridor, that Greenwood runs between Western and Hickory, and most significantly, this week, we, the church at St. John Church up on Greenwood began doing work to repair their wall facing the street that was crumbling. There have been construction materials out there for many months, maybe over a year, but we finally began doing some work. The sidewalk's being cleaned of the construction material, they're in process of tearing down that wall and rebuilding it. I don't know how far they're going to get before the, the weather changes, but it's, I mean, it's a significant beginning, right? So very good on that. Also, we have worked with the landlord or new owner of the car wash, the old car wash at the corner of Jackson and Greenwood, made significant progress in cleaning that up, right? And, and you know, I, I got to tell you that, you know, a lot of times I come up here and I'm talking, and I'm not trying to give the impression that these are all things that I'm doing, but often, I'm just reporting what's happening. Most of the credit for this stuff goes to Public Works, the code depart, code compliance officer, Josh Nickerson, and the building department. They're doing the work out there. I'm just the guy that kind of says, hey, go do something, right? So, but I, I really am happy and delighted with the progress and new tone that we've set in the sixth ward as far as getting things done. Neighborhood cleanliness is just delightful, and so I want to, you know, kudos to Public Works, code compliance, and my neighbors. That's it. Thank you.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you. I want to echo what Alderman Turner said. I get calls and I pass them along. I call Mike and Mike gets it done. I want to congratulate him. The streets are getting paved. Hopefully, we'll continue with that process, and, and again, gratulations. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Excellent job.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you. I want to thank all of those who came out tonight to speak during audience time. We do appreciate that and do listen to you. I want to clarify a couple of things from the last meeting. When I spoke about voting on the casino, I said that the majority of my ward did not support a casino. I didn't say the entire ward. I made sure I stayed up last night and watched the video to make sure I said that correctly. I also wanted to clarify a little bit about, about what Alderman Turner and I had spoken about, about Black Lives Matter. I can't speak for him, but for myself, I, I have nothing against the organization at all. I'm just trying to understand how the city decides which organizations and, and events to sponsor, and, and what dollars we spend on those things. So it was nothing personal about Black Lives Matter. I'm actually going to attend the event, and I support what they do, so that was not in any way, shape, or form a reflection of any feelings about Black Lives Matter. I also want to talk about a ward cleanup in my ward on the 28th. Thank you to Public Works, Monday the 28th, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The dumpster is actually going to be located in the St. Dismas parking lot for that area of the ward. If you have any questions, please call me about that. And then I want to emphasize what the mayor said in the beginning about the leaf pickup, leaves only on the parkway, and the information is posted on my Facebook page, as well as the city's Facebook page, so, thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
I just want to remind people, we had our last ward cleanup this last Saturday. Remember with those leaves, again, we get big piles of them, please do not put them into the road. And last, I want to remind people, for those of you in the ninth ward that are gurnee and Waukegan, your trick-or-treat hours are Sunday, October 27th, from 2:00 to 5:00. Many of you that have a Libertyville mailing address, not all, but many of you, your trick-or-treat hours are October 31st from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. If any of you have questions about your individual subdivision, please give me a call at 847-212-4762. Thank you.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I want to, once again, send condolences out to Mrs. Isabel Buckner, who was my principal. She was the first African-American female principal who served at Carmen Elementary